York School District Board of Trustees. Do I have a motion for executive session?
So move for executive session as listed certified personnel.
Have a motion for executive session certified personnel, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, moment's howl. All those favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, we'll now go into executive session. My executive session, do I have a second?
Second.
Second moment's howl. All those favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, motion carries. We'll resume the regular session immediately in two minutes.
I'd like to call this meeting to order for a general session of York School District One, Board of Trustees. I'd like to welcome everybody this evening. We could have Pastor Brock Rossberg from Bible Covenant Community Church in York come up for our invocation.
Father, I pray. Our precious heavenly Father, we come before you now to ask for your blessing upon this meeting, upon York School District Number One. Father, I pray that you would give wisdom to every teacher, administrator, counselor. Father, I pray that York School District Number One would excel in education and shun indoctrination. Father, I pray for a multiplied hedge of protection about these students, about this school. Father, I pray that you would sovereignly protect them from harm. Father, I pray that these students would understand the value of education, understand that excelling here and now in school will prepare them for a better future. And Father, I would ask that York School District Number One would always honor you, would always lift your name high and never be ashamed to claim the name of Jesus Christ, our risen Lord. I pray in his name, amen.
Thank you, Pastor Rossberg. Now I have leading our pledge of allegiance, Grayson Schillinglaw.
From Harold C. Johnson. Stupid eye of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Grayson. I'd like the meeting notes to reflect that we do have a quorum with Mr. Anderson not in attendance, everyone else present. We do have confirmation of notice to media, are any members of the media present tonight? No member of present, no members of the media are noted to be here tonight. We do not have anyone here for public forum tonight. I'll ask now for approval of the consent agenda, do I have a motion?
So move for approval of the consent agenda.
Have a motion by Ms. Johnson for approval of the consent agenda, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rebels, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, motion carries. Now I have our recognitions, have a school spotlight for Harold C. Johnson, and we'll have Ms. Crystal Sanford, principal, and others.
All right, Chairman Childers, board members, Superintendent Cox, thank you for the opportunity to showcase the wonderful things that are happening at Harold C. Johnson Elementary School. I am Crystal Sanford, principal, and with me tonight I have our assistant principal Hannah Ressigno, second grade teacher Taylor Green, and our School Improvement Council chairperson, Ms. Julie Schillinglaw, proud mom tonight, too.
This year, we are focusing on goal number one of our strategic change agenda to provide a challenging and secure environment to ensure readiness for our students. We are focusing on instructional practices with a focus on student-centered learning.
Our theme this year at Harold C. Johnson is Level Up and Win, and we've used a video gaming concept, our students really identify with that theme, and they can really relate to it. And in video games, you're in a perpetual state of conquering one level and moving up to the next with the challenges getting more and more difficult as you go. Similarly, we want our students to set goals around our grade level standards and constantly work to move up to mastery of those standards and beyond. We ensure that our students reach these goals through our daily win time, our targeted whole class instruction, and our focus on professional development. So our video will provide more details about those things, so let's watch to see those in action.
So here at Harold C. Johnson Elementary School, our theme this year is Level Up and Win, and win stands for what I need. So we're really focusing on making sure that we provide students with exactly the instruction that they need at any given point in time. So we are focusing on thirty minutes of targeted instruction for reading and thirty minutes of targeted instruction for math daily. So we kind of expanded on our start that we had last year with our flow time, and this year we moved into what we're calling win time. First, like anything, when we're like, okay, we're gonna take thirty minutes for reading and thirty minutes for math at first, you know, teachers' brains are just, you know, how are we gonna make it work, how are we gonna make it work? But, I mean, they tackle anything. And so that thing, they can now really see from the growth that we had last year how necessary it is to put that focus on our math instruction as well.
We've really focused on looking at what we need to teach in the standard, not just like all the bits and pieces, but what's the essential parts that we need to teach to our whole group. We're going through that and focusing on that piece for the whole group, and then we're pulling in pieces for mastery connect, not just as that assessment piece. We're using it as questions of the day, we're using it in small group, and we're doing like quick checks and check-ins with different pieces of that to make sure the students are learning the material and then learning it at their rigor that they need to use it at.
With our focus on instructional practices, we have really targeted our tier one instruction to make sure that we're reaching the actual level of the standard and the level of rigor that the students need in order to be prepared for our annual assessments. Our students definitely are very, you know, excited to have the opportunity to kind of work with math, with their math time and their reading time throughout the day because the teachers are also deciding what's best for that student. So the platform that they might use, I mean, not everything's with technology, some of it is, some of it's not. And the kids really enjoy that time to dig into whether we're working with mastery connect or exact math, like Excel, some of those things that are working for our math instruction. Another aspect that we've focused on this year is we recently provided extended planning for our teachers that was kind of wrapped in with their regular planning to provide extra time for them to really dig into their math resources. So our literacy coach, along with administration and teachers, worked really hard on just prepping the materials for the teachers to make sure they were able to analyze the standards, unpack the standards, decide which resources they need. And the main focus of that in the beginning was to make sure that they're actually teaching at the, to the correct standard and the rigor of that standard. This is our second year of professional development around letters, which is provided through the State Department and Lexia Learning, and it is a professional development series of one hundred and twenty credits per year for two years in phonemic awareness and reading instructions and best practices for reading instruction.
So this is my second year of doing the letters program, and letters has been putting a big emphasis on the big five literacy elements, which is comprehension, vocabulary, fluency, phonics, and phonemic awareness. So math, reading, writing, science, social studies, everything has vocabulary. So I try to make sure they're exposed to it multiple times a day, multiple times a week. I feel like the more they're exposed to it, the more it becomes in their expressive language, and that way they can use it throughout the day, too. And then they're gonna see it in a book, they're like, oh, I know what that word is, and I know what it means, and it doesn't even interfere with their comprehension. Even with the likes of the pedagogy of the day, we do it, and we do one every day. So the one from last week, then I think of a book, and they're like, oh, I remember this. And like, then they'll utilize it in their reading, and they'll tell me what it means, and they get super excited about it. They love that they know what it means already without me having to even do like a preview of the book and show them and tell them what it means.
As you can see, we're doing a lot of hard work at Harold C. Johnson to increase student achievement. We are striving for academic excellence, and we know that our teachers are the key to this level of success. We want to thank our teachers for the heavy work they are doing, and we are confident that this hard work will truly help us level up and push our students to higher levels of academic success. Thank you.
Do you have any questions? Just like to comment, what I need, seems like a good catchy phrase, too. But the rigor part, I mean, hearing about the rigor is very important. I think a lot of times the rigor is what, you know, people seem to miss or not understand what that actually means, so appreciate it.
Definitely working on that, what are we teaching to the whole group? And then what are you teaching to small groups? And what the individual students need may be that the rest of the group doesn't need.
And then the technology versus not, I think is very important, too.
Yes.
Thank you for presenting.
All right, thank you.
And I'll move to student recognitions, Mrs. Lisa Swaimer.
Good evening, I know the board shares with me that...
Mr. David Swaim, this is, I forgot to mention that.
I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry.
That's on me, not you.
Thank you, Mr. Swaim. I know the board shares my excitement to see the room full with so many students and parents tonight, so thank you for being here. We're gonna start off and ask Mr. Keith McSwain, who's the principal at York Intermediate, to come forward, along with Ms. Jane Wallace, who's the principal at Hunter Street, and Ms. Megan Hoyt, who's the principal at Cotton Belt Elementary School. Then if we can ask the following teachers to join them, Ms. Rachel Hoff, who's the choir director at York Intermediate, Ms. Donna Fields, who's the choir director at Hunter Street, and Ms. Deana Wade, who's the choir director at Cotton Belt. So you can guess, with all these people coming forward, we have a lot of students to recognize, and we're excited about that. Congratulations to the following students who were selected by audition for the 2024 South Carolina Elementary Honor Choir. More than four hundred young singers from across the state of South Carolina auditioned for this prestigious honor choir, and it's quite an accomplishment for these awesome young singers to be selected to participate in this event. They will represent York School District One with great pride and talent during the February concert that will be held in Columbia. So students, if you're here, please come forward. Jaden George from York Intermediate, Bentley Grace from York Intermediate, Ava Haynes from York Intermediate, Madeline Markle from York Intermediate, Julia Newman from York Intermediate, Shayna Littleton from York Intermediate, Nora Taylor from Hunter Street, Autumn Purnell from Cotton Belt, and Amaya Monroe from Cotton Belt. Let's give these young singers a round of applause. I'd like to invite Dr. John Tharp to come forward, he's the principal at York Comprehensive High School, along with Ms. Lizzie Elliott, who's the choir director at York Comprehensive High. Congratulations to the following members of the York Comprehensive High School Choir who were selected for the 2024 South Carolina American Choral Directors Association Honor Choir. These students submitted auditions and competed against students from across the state for a spot in the choir. They will be participating in the Honor Choir event in January. So students, please come forward. Louis Beralis, Arianna Brialt, Audrey Bronson, Audrey Bran, Lindsay Heath, Grayson Henson, Savannah Honeycutt, Ricky Gavia Mendoza, Cameron Neal, Ian Roeder, Silas Schumacher, Harmony Strickland, and JD Waxman. Congratulations, students. Mr. Cooper, you got a number of parents behind you when you're... I'd like to invite Ms. Megan Hoyt, who's the principal at Cotton Belt, back up, please. Ms. Rita Woodley, if you're here, please come forward. Ms. Woodley received the Duke Energy Science Night Grant for Cotton Belt Elementary School. This grant will provide supplies for a STEM family night for up to two hundred participants. We know that'll be a lot of fun for our kids, thank you, Ms. Woodley. I'd like to invite the following principals to come forward, Ms. Rebecca Dover from Hickory Grove Sharon Elementary, Ms. Jane Wallace from Hunter Street Elementary, Mr. Keith McSwain from York Intermediate School, and Dr. John Tharp from York Comprehensive High School. Is Ms. Emma Sutton here with York Electric Cooperative, come forward, please. Ms. Emma Sutton is the communications and outreach person for York Electric Cooperative, and we're excited that you're here, thank you for being here with us. York Electric Cooperative and Operation Roundup Trust Fund grants for local teachers, applicants can win up to $1,000 to help pay for innovative learning methods and materials to support students in their classrooms. Congratulations to the following teachers who were awarded Bright Ideas Grants. First of all, Taylor McSwain from Hickory Grove Sharon Elementary School, he got $1,000 for his fitness club. Norma Jean Coier from Hickory Grove Sharon, who got $350 for her handbell choir. Abigail Trailer from Hickory Grove Sharon Elementary, who had $900 for brass instruments for elementary students. Melanie Westverlin from Hunter Street, $1,000 for smart carts. Deat Man, $1,000 from York Intermediate, I'm sorry, $1,000 for stimulating students through immigration simulation. Dr. Leslie Reel from York Comprehensive High School, $1,000 for mathematics for the future. And Kelly Tiblier from York Comprehensive High School, $1,000 for great storylines plus incredible visuals equal graphic novels for reluctant, really, readers. Congratulations, teachers, and thank you, York Electric.
Most of the chorus students might have left at high school, but South Carolina School Board Association does ask for requests to perform at the delegate assembly in Charleston. Is that in Charleston or Hilton Head? Hilton Head, wrong place. So they will be performing for the South Carolina School Board Association in December. So I think that's, that's great that they got accepted to do that. Now have reports. We'll have our Connect Ed Conference. Ms. Alyssa Cox, Ms. April Ulmer, and Dr. Leslie Reel.
Good evening, Chairman Childers and members of the board. I am delighted to actually introduce to you Dr. Leslie Reel, who led the initiative with the teacher forum and is excited to have the opportunity to provide you an update of how successful that Connect Ed conference was. So I'm going to turn that over to her. To the board, Superintendent Cox, everyone in attendance. We had a great day on October the 9th. We appreciated your support of this idea that we had. And with the hard work of lots of people in this community, it came full circle. Our day started with coffee trucks out front to greet our staff, just like they attended any conference offsite, which was our, or my initial goal was to make people excited about PD and to have a day where they felt like they were somewhere else getting the royal treatment. So we had coffee trucks waiting out front. We had vendors ready. And you can see we had a couple of sessions, a keynote speaker. Lunch was provided by Chartwells. Couple more sessions and then vendors again to round out the day. Everything that we did, everything that was presented was connected back to our strategic change agenda. Each person that submitted an application to present connected it. And I think you could feel that and you could read that if you looked over our program. Some of the things we're most proud of, we had 53 presenters from York School District One of 68 sessions, excuse me. 330 teachers were on site. We did have several who, of course, were at the OEC conference of their own. We raised $1,850 in local sponsorships. And we had an outstanding keynote address. Darryl Williams Jr. is an assistant principal in Charlotte. And he came and gave us just a fascinating keynote address, if you were in attendance. And his comment was, "We're all 99% human and 1% amazing." And that it is up to you to use that uniqueness that makes you who you are to educate your students and to be the person you are. So it was very impressive, I think, to everyone who was there. And if you were in attendance, he gave you a free copy of his book, a digital copy. So we were well pleased. That was sponsored by Crystal Teague Dental. Then we had lunch that was sponsored by Chartwells, of course. You can see there's a picture of him speaking. Several presenters of our own, many who have been in this room tonight. We had a cookie delivery midday, which was a bright spot, I believe. Lunch being served by our amazing staff. Again, thank you to our sponsors. And you can see here, if you take a look, just at how many people from our community gave back to the teachers of York One. And there's a picture of the people who were there. We did outgoing teacher forum representatives, current and the newly appointed teachers of the year. But I believe it was a great day. I appreciate you supporting our endeavor. And I believe it made a difference in many educators that day. Any questions?
It does seem like a great day, so thank you for the efforts of all.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Next up, special services update by Mr. Brian Greason.
Well, good evening, Chairman Childers, board members, and Superintendent Cox. I appreciate the opportunity to give you some updates from the world of special services. And we're just going to go ahead and get started. When we look at our work with students with disabilities, we're going to center that work around our vision, our mission, and our beliefs. And you can see by the highlighted language there that each child is unique. It is definitely a collaborative effort between schools and community. And individualized is such a big part of our world. This is a slide that I actually shared with you last year. It's a tweet from Leigh Ann Young, who's kind of a nationally known advocate for students being included in all areas of school. And it says, "Students with IEDPs are just students." And that continues to be the mindset for us in special services. Our students are York School District One services. The days of having students and then special ed students are long gone, as it should be. So let me just kind of show you some of the focuses that we have for this year. Our priority for students with disabilities is to create access. It's not exceptions. So we're going to be looking at what is the access they have to the general curriculum, appropriate school-related activities, special education and related services, and supplementary aides and services that they need. We want to have these in the least restrictive environment. Definitely have access to our district and statewide assessments, our state academic standards, and then appropriate transition services. And I think as we go through the presentation, you'll see these things. So as we work with the State Department, the Office of Special Education Services, we know that the critical areas of need in South Carolina are early childhood literacy, our graduation and dropout rates, mental health of our students and student behavior, and then teacher-related and service provider shortage. We know that special ed and then related services, there's a big shortage of those folks to be hired. Each year, York School District One receives the special education determinations. LEA determinations is somewhat of our report card. And based on the 2122 data, which is what they use even for this year, we fall within the needs assistance determination there. It is in two categories, its compliance and its performance. And we'll take a look at that. Areas of need and focus in York School District One is our graduation rate. That's one thing that needs to be focused. We were just under the state target for that. Looking at our ELA and math performance in the fourth and eighth grade indicator on South Carolina Ready was another. And then our suspension rates for students with disabilities. Students with disabilities can obviously be suspended from school, but we want to curtail that as much as we can. And then career readiness is the other area. The Office of Special Education Services has developed an alliance of teams. It's called South Carolina Teams. And this is going to be a great resource to our district. They're partnering with universities and outside agencies, as well as some State Department folks. And we have these different agencies that we can use for professional development and resources. And you can see there, they're for academic behavior. The Partnership for Inclusion is for our preschool support students. And then transition is for those services preparing our students once they leave high school. And we're already taking advantage of some of those services. And that will be a long-term, that's more than just this year. And we're excited about those opportunities. The areas of strength in York School District One, again, on our report card, the school age least restrictive environment and then the early childhood least restrictive environment. In other words, we don't have an over-identification of students in the more self-contained type programs. All areas of compliance, we had no findings at all. We earned all our points on that. Having our annual reviews done on time, 60-day timeline for evaluations, not having disproportionate numbers of students identified in different categories. And then we also had an excellent Medicaid quality assurance review. And I want to thank Kelly Wilkerson and our staff there did a great job with that. And then finally, strength is our staff. Okay, speaking of our staff, looking at the numbers, we've been pretty consistent, grown a little bit with our special ed teachers, a little bit with our special ed teacher assistants. And you can see there, the other folks that we have in related services, we've maintained pretty steady numbers there. I did want to point out with administrative assistance over ESC, we have four. Two of those are part-time, but it's very workable. The special age coordinator also serves as our preschool disabilities coordinator and a school psychologist. And then our students, looking at our numbers, at the time I've developed this slide, 4,033. And we have 1,028 students that is identified with students with disabilities. So that gives us right at 20.4%. That is a bit high. You know, 15% a few years ago was kind of the norm. I can tell you that's a national trend. It's not just here, that numbers of special ed students being identified is on the increase. One interesting thing that I read earlier this week, autism used to be 1 in 44 two years ago. And now it's 1 in 36 youngsters are identified on the autism spectrum. So those type things, ADHD, the increases in diagnosis and that type thing, our numbers have gone up with special education. Okay? Our enrollment trends, 2021 to 2122, we did have a bit of a jump there, but you can see those last three years have been pretty steady. And that's based on our October 31 head count. So that's the numbers of students with disabilities in the district. And so looking at caseloads and capacities, as we're looking at York growing and the neighborhoods coming up and that type thing, and the increase in enrollment, we just want to look at the capacity for our programs. So I've got some information for you here. And I've got a lot of acronyms coming up. And I'm going to show you some slides for school to school. So just to let you see that academic support two is primarily students with learning disabilities. Behavior support two is primarily students with behavioral needs. And then we have ML1 for intellectual, mild intellectual disabilities. ML2 is some more moderate intellectual disabilities. And then that ML3 are those that are severe profound disabilities, have, need a lot of care and a lot of needs there. I use the word primarily because it's never a student is in a certain category and automatically goes to a class. That is an IEP team decision doing that together. So let's take a look at our schools, starting with Cotton Belt. We'll see the different programs there. The current number, of course, is the students enrolled now. And then that max daily caseload is what the state gives us for the state max. For preschool disabilities, you'll see an NA for those programs because that's, interesting enough, one of the categories that the state doesn't give us a caseload max. But we just make sure we're not too crowded in our classrooms. And you can see there on that slide in all those programs that we are below the caseload and we're okay. And as we go through, you'll see Harold C. Johnson, again, within, kind of close here on academic support two, pretty close, but we're managing that just fine. And then Hickory Grove Sharon has six on that caseload. I will say that Hickory Grove Sharon has the most resourced students. We'll look at that in a few minutes. And Michelle Sanders, a teacher there, has been able to pick up some of those students and help in that situation. So we're doing okay there. Hunter Street, again, you see the numbers there within our caseload max. Jefferson Elementary School. And then as we move up to the intermediate school, again, we have those different programs. And you can see we're okay on those maximum caseloads that are given. Middle School. Those are the programs there. And then the high school. So again, as far as capacity and building and classrooms and things, you know, some of them are getting fairly full, but we're doing okay. We're doing okay. All right, sped teachers, just to give you an idea of how many certified staff are in each building, those are the numbers there. And as we continue to monitor our special needs classrooms, having enough supervision, of course, is a key. And I appreciate the support of this board. I know I've come to you and we've talked about, you know, some more paraprofessionals, that type thing. A lot I read in the special education law has to deal with, obviously, with situations that happen with children not being adequately supervised to meet their needs. And so we definitely appreciate that support. And so we can, we'll keep an eye on those. Safety and supervision are key, again, with our York School District One beliefs. A safe, orderly, and nurturing environment is essential for learning. And that's so true in these special needs classrooms. And our paraprofessionals are a key to that success. Okay, support numbers. When we talk about resource and our speech numbers, of course, these are youngsters that are primarily in general ed classrooms most of the day. But they, the resource or the academic support one teachers also have a max caseload. And so at the elementary, the average is 20. And intermediate's 25, middle school 26. The high school, I've got two numbers there. Right now, we're at 39 because we're two teachers short. We had two teachers, contract teachers that are no longer there. But starting in January, we'll pull that number down to 28 because we have folks hired and that won't be a new FTE. But we'll be in a much better shape at the high school starting in January. And our transition coordinator, Ashley Oliver, has been able to assist us and assist some of those teachers with IEDPs and that type thing. Speech language, their max is 60. We're right around 53. There's still some more students to identify, obviously. Some will be dismissed. But I'll be keeping a close eye on that number to see for next year, when I'm looking at budget, if we're adequate with our speech and language. Okay, one thing that we're excited about, South Carolina Create. And Ms. Boland and I are working real hard with a lot of our paraprofessionals that have an opportunity to get licensed as special education teachers. And they can do it for little or no cost. And so at this time, we have 14 of our paraprofessionals enrolled in this program. And that's great news for us because as they get licensed, we're going to be, hopefully, be hiring those folks. So we've got some great opportunities there. I think what's really exciting about that is those folks have had a lot of experience in special needs classrooms. You know, they've got the experience. They just need to get licensed and get their internships. And they just come in. So we've got a good opportunity there because, again, we have that shortage of special ed teachers and related services folks. Now, just going back to some of the things, as far as some of the work that we have to do, again, we have a lot of our tools for academics. Highlighted there, Classworks, this is an initiative that we started this year. And it's a great progress monitoring tool for our special education teachers. And so students come in and they take assessments. They get multiple probes. And then they can script what they're working on in those special needs classrooms and in the resource type programs about working on standards-based and skills-based. And it creates great graphs and things during IEP meetings. It's been, will be real helpful for parents to understand their youngster's progress. So we're really excited to get Classworks going this year. Tools for behavior and attendance. Of course, we're collaborating with principals together about, you know, out-of-school suspension for students and that type thing. We've got all kinds of things listed there. The multi-tiered supports and system teams, that's a key. And our schools are doing a great job. Our folks, like our school psychologists at ESC, give a lot of support to those teams. But I think with a lot of those things going on, we've got some good things going on for our students that are struggling, learners are struggling with behavior or struggling with social skills. And then the last one, monthly attendance discipline meetings. Mr. Carper and our social workers meet in each school and meet with those students that are struggling with discipline and attendance. And then transition career readiness. We've got a partnership grant with Vocational Rehab. This is the second year. We have two retired special ed teachers working with us part-time. And this is a great opportunity where they can really work individually with students and work in small groups and are really working on career readiness with those students. And Pathful Explorer is another software and a program that we have that goes along with that. We're getting really good response with that. One other thing I wanted to highlight, on October 24th, we had a transition fair. Again, I want to thank Ashley Oliver, our transition coordinator. We partnered with Clover and we had all those agencies there and more. And we had over 150 parents of both districts, a lot of them York One. And it was a really good night to help our families with what's going to happen after high school. Our next initiative, Frontline Enrich, our IEP program and data reporting is going away. The State Department has purchased Ed Plan South Carolina. And much to our teachers' dismay, we'll be learning a new IEP program. But we're going to make it work. And we've had Enrich for 10 years. It's been a great program, but we'll be moving into something new. We'll begin to train the trainer in January, February. And then we'll convert over this summer. There will actually be a couple, three weeks where both systems will be down. And then when they bring it up, we'll be ready to implement that program beginning the 2425 school year. I know I went through a lot of information there. I'd be glad to entertain any questions that you may have.
May I have any questions or comments from Mr. Greason?
Thank you. The new program, do you have a feel if it-
The new program, do you have a feel if it will be easier for our teachers?
I'll be honest, I've heard fifty-fifty. I've heard some folks, we've got some new folks, a couple from North Carolina that absolutely love the IEP part. And then I've heard some others that not getting such great reviews. But yeah, so it'll be interesting to see, but we're going to make it work.
And when you showed the numbers with current versus max, did we accommodate the max with our current staff?
Yes. And we'll continue to look at that as I develop budget for next year, looking at those. I'm really looking at those speech numbers. And right now with those programs, we may be looking at, again, the high school. I think we're in good shape now, but as students move up and we look at our numbers, there's a possibility we could look at where, if we need another teacher here or there. We'll continue to monitor that. Right now, in those special needs classes, the one at Cotton Belt, we were able to divide in two. We were right at the brink, and this is the first year we've had two teachers. And it's been, it's been great for those youngsters. So I'll just kind of keep monitoring that to see. Sure.
I just had a, I know you said that the number of special needs kids is trending upward nationally. And we're at twenty point four percent.
Right.
Now, would that be above the average for the nation, nationally, or?
There's, the latest reading I had, there's about five or six states that they identified that twenty is not unusual. I would say it used to be around twelve to fifteen percent. And so it is a bit above. And one of the things we're looking at as far as the data, of course, the kids that transfer in and those that are leaving, and it's always been a trend the last couple, three years that more are moving in than moving out. But we have looked at our initial evaluations. And the thing is, we're responsible for child find. So we absolutely must identify children we suspect with a disability, which is a good thing. But when we look at those numbers, we're not increasing like the number of evaluations and students being placed within the district. It's been pretty steady.
Thank you.
Yes.
So with the changeover on the new IEP program, did the state figure out a way to transfer the data from the old system into the new system? Or is that going to be manually done?
They say they've got it, that they will handle that. And right now, the IEP program, I think we're going to be fine. What I'm the most concerned about is exactly what you're saying is when we take that data and that the reporting, there's so many reports that are pulled and that we provide for the different, you know, things that we're required to do. And yeah, I'm not, well, we'll see. Yes, there you go, absolutely, so.
If anybody does understand that, we get a lot of mandates from the state, whether we want to or not. We have to fund it just for public knowledge, so. Ms. Johnson, Ms. Faulkner, any comments or questions?
I don't think so. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I had, Brian, sorry.
Absolutely, yes.
So, and you don't have to give me this now. I was curious how many are doing the training, like, versus how many could do the training? I guess for certification or?
You mean that fourteen?
For this.
Fourteen, right. So fourteen are, are?
Oh, for Project Create, yes. What it is, is they.
Out of how many, I guess? How many aren't taking advantage of that?
Yeah, right now, of those fourteen, they have all applied, and most of them have already signed up with whichever university they're going to be a partner with. And there, a lot of them have already started their coursework. And then the next thing we have asked them for is to project when they think they might be able to have their internship. And it's kind of staggered. Some are coming up pretty quickly, and then some of them will be down the road a bit. But those fourteen are officially applied and have been accepted, and most of them are on their way with the coursework. And they can get it done as quickly as they can. If they have, you know, work, a second job, a family, and they want to stretch it out, there's no magic way. It's really up to that candidate, which is a good thing, I think.
And it's funded. They don't have to.
Yes, that's right. It's very little, most of the time, there's no cost whatsoever, which is right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Going to our Assistant Superintendent for Academic Innovation and Professional Learning, turn it over to Dr. Latoya Dixon for the academic calendar year first reading.
Good evening, Chairman Childers, members of the board. Working in collaboration with York School District One's Teacher Forum, who unanimously endorsed the consideration of a modified balanced calendar for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Two drafts of a modified balanced calendar were shared with staff via a survey, which opened on Thursday, November ninth, and closed today about midday. Three hundred and thirty-two respondents completed the survey. Eighty-two percent of the respondents selected Modified Draft A, which I bring to you for first reading.
Before we go to the motions, do you might have any questions, staff? No questions? Is there a motion for approval of first reading for Modified Calendar A?
So move for first reading for Modified Calendar Draft A.
Got a motion by Ms. Johnson for Modified Calendar A for approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. McSwain. Any discussion?
Could you tell us how this might be different from this year's calendar?
Very similar, very similar to this year's calendar. There really isn't much difference, other than in Modified Draft A, there's no professional development day for that first intercession break. So the first intercession this school year, we had a PD day that Monday, and then Tuesday through Friday was the intercession break. This calendar honors that entire week.
So I guess I kind of struggled with this. And a lot of this, I just don't know what the teachers go through with the students. So having the intercession a week after the grading period versus having it the week before, and part of my thought process was, you know, is one better than the other?
Well, we have a policy for makeup work. So when students are absent, I believe board policy says they have three days within the absence to make up the work. So if students need to make up the work at the end of the quarter, it would be relative to an absence that was related to that week. Does that make sense? So we would hope that that work would be made up well prior to the end of that quarter. And although the quarter might end on the fourth, principals, we set forth guidelines around when grades are due for teachers to actually put them in the computer so they wouldn't lose opportunities to make up work necessarily by the intercession being placed after that week.
And I was thinking, and this is me not, like, again, I'm not an educator, but having it after too, is that giving the students opportunity at that point to know, I know what my grade is, I know what I got to catch up during the intercession period? Is that a?
Absolutely, absolutely. We're doing that through interims and progress reports. And another good thing to remember, that one of the comments that came through our survey is that our teachers very much wanted our calendar to align with Clover's. And that intercession is placed exactly identical to the calendar that Clover, I think, is going to second reading for their meeting.
Any other discussion or questions before we get to the vote?
And does school start on, according to the proposed calendar for Clover, does it start August first also?
I don't have it in front of me, but I believe it's very, very similar. I believe it's exactly the same. I'd have to verify that.
And I was looking at these calendars, Draft A has school starting August first. Draft B has school starting August fifth. That's the difference in starting school on Thursday versus that Monday. Is there any altercation we could make to the calendar to draft A so that school could start on Monday, that still under Draft A? Have you all looked at that?
We absolutely could look at that. I will tell you that overwhelming comments from teachers came that they would prefer to start school midweek rather than on a Monday and have a full week with kids for the adjustment. That's overwhelming, but we certainly could look at that. Backing that up to Monday, of course, changes the other end and could change the balance of semesters.
I guess I would like to add, just before second reading, that we get the survey results. Maybe we'll look at those just to know, you know, some of what was indicated on the survey.
Sure.
And some of those numbers, so.
Sure, happy.
Which I know you can provide to us, so.
Be happy to.
Any other discussion or comments from the board before we go to vote? So we have a motion on the floor for approval at first reading for Calendar Draft A. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dixon. Now move to Director of Secondary Programs, Ms. Alyssa Cox. New course recommendations.
Good evening again. Just a reminder that York School District One Board Policy IG Curriculum Development, Adoption and Review establishes the expectation that any proposed new course must receive approval of the superintendent and the Board of Trustees prior to offering to students and implementation. Therefore, approval, we have one action item tonight. Approval is respectfully requested for the implementation and offering of the courses that are in your packet, the slate of courses for the school year of twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
Does anybody have any questions, staff, or go into a motion?
I have some questions, but should they come under discussion?
They can. I just want to make sure nobody has a direct question that might change a, change a motion. But we can go into a motion?
What?
Do I have a motion for approval as presented?
So move for approval as presented.
Have a motion by Ms. Johnson, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Rebels. Discussion?
I have a couple of things. I'm excited about some of the courses that are being proposed here. A question, I know there is a, I'm going to call it the teacher course. I don't have that in front of me, but I think there's one and two that deals with teachers for students becoming teachers.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Where does that put teacher cadet? Would that still be offered on the high school level? Or do we still have teacher cadet? And explain that to me, how that would work.
Yes, so teacher cadet would still be offered on the high school level. And the thought process that's, that would become part of that pathway as well if students wanted to complete that. We also have an MOU with Winthrop that can offer the second level of teacher cadet that would couple with it. And I cannot recall the name of it right now, Ms. Howell, but there's a second dual-credit course that couples with teacher cadet.
So is it going to be a Floyd D. Johnson course or?
Your teaching courses will be Floyd D. Johnson. They'll be offered on that Floyd D. side. And then supplemental to that will be the dual-credit course because there are certain certifications for those teachers to teach that on the high school side. And it would still be open enrollment, that students standalone. It could be coupled with their pathway or still that standalone teacher cadet that students could enroll in.
So we don't feel like it would hurt the teacher cadet program?
No, ma'am.
And I noticed, and again, very excited about the number of courses that Floyd D.'s recommending, and none of these cost us anything, which we like that. But what, we're not getting more staff and there's a number of courses. So we're going to overload, we're going to eliminate.
So what, and I'm going to speak a little bit for Dr. Green, and I may ask you to come up here, but what he has done is looked at course request, demand each year. And there are some programs that are kind of dwindling out due to industry and the demand from those companies. And so he's making some modifications to either supplement or kind of maneuver students into a pathway that's underneath the same umbrella, but with different specialized coursework. Is there one that you had a particular question about or just in general?
In general, the number of courses, you add courses, somebody's got to teach them, and you're not getting more staff.
Yeah.
So are we overloading, we eliminate?
No, we're eliminating. So oftentimes, what happens in course requests is that we may only have one or two students that are signing up for some of the courses that he is offering in a pathway. And so through his work, he's determined that these are the courses that we need to replace those with.
And, and the other thing I had is the cost of teachers being trained to teach some of these. And will they have to pay it or will it be taken care of?
We take care of all the training costs for our teachers. It's written into our Perkins plans. For example, the Project Lead the Way Computer Science, we're covering the cost of that. And we're also, that's the only program that will need training, was the Project Lead the Way Computer Science. We're covering that for them.
So we've got staff on board qualified to teach all these courses?
Yes, ma'am.
Certified.
Yes, ma'am.
So I guess with that, for the GT for the honors courses, so what? What happens with that as far as training? I know you say covering the cost of other things, I understand that. Like the GT courses, what's required for that? Do we have, I think to Ms. Howell's point, do we have teachers that are covering what those courses are?
So if you're in an honors level course or you want to offer an honors level course, we receive funding for students that are gifted and talented, that are in an honors level course that's being instructed by a teacher that has a GT endorsement. The state and through various partnerships of colleges, they offer that GT endorsement through two graduate-level courses that is generally either free or if it's not, it can be funded through Perkins funds for those teachers.
So do we, and this, so at the high school level, that's the same requirement, whether it's in Floyd D.?
That is correct, that is correct.
It's not a different requirement?
No, sir.
And I guess from Ms. Howell's standpoint, it'd probably be good for us to know what courses are being removed, just so we're aware, not now, but.
Right, we can certainly provide that for you.
Yeah, and I just, I'm sure we are and probably just don't realize it half the time, honestly.
It ebbs and flows, for sure.
Yeah, and it could be.
The course demand, mm-hmm.
And Howell, you accommodating the ones who did want one of the eliminated courses? She said it could be one or two to be eliminated. So are you putting them somewhere?
Yes, ma'am. So students always request alternates, knowing that there's a disclaimer that a course must have appropriate number that are requesting it for that course to be offered. So students request alternates, and then we try to work to accommodate that.
And I know there's something all about Floyd D. Johnson, but.
He had so many.
Having the numbers, well, you did, and having the numbers that you provided last week for the meeting on the professional development day. That was good information, too. We probably should send that out to the board if we don't have all those numbers from the presentation. Any other questions? All right. I have a motion for approval and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Cotton.
Thank you all for your support.
Thank you, Dr. Green.
Thank you.
Now I have Director of Human Resources, Ms. Jennifer Bowlin.
Good evening. I have four action items for you tonight. Our first action item is certified resignations and release of twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four contracts.
And I got to get back to my other page because I've got this far, so I'll do that. So I have for you certified resignations and release of twenty twenty-three, twenty-four contracts. Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Rebels, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Johnson, any discussion or need for executive session? So you know, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries.
All right, our second item is certified resignations and release of twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four contracts.
Do I have a motion for twenty twenty-three, twenty-four contracts, certified resignations and release?
So move for adoption.
Tending suitable replacement? I would like to add that, Ms. Johnson. I have a motion by Ms. Johnson, do I have a second?
Second.
And a second by Ms. Howell, any need for discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries.
Our next item is certified retirement.
Have before you certified retirement. Do I have a motion?
So move for adoption and congratulations.
Motion by Ms. Johnson for adoption and congratulations, do I have a second? Second by Ms. Faulkner, any need for discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries.
All right, and my last item, certified recommendations for this school year.
Have before you certified recommendations for this school year, do I have a motion?
So move for approval for certified recommendations for this current school year. So move for approval for certified recommendations for this current school year.
I have a motion by Ms. Johnson, certified recommendation for this school year. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Howell. Any need for discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boland. Have a next Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations, Ms. Amy Hagner.
Good evening, board members. Have two action items for you tonight. First is a group of policies from School Board Association Review and I ask for your approval for second reading.
Have before you policies and we're doing administrative rules at the same time, we're several, sorry, together. So for policies and administrative rules as listed, as recommended by administration for second final reading. Do I have a motion?
So move for second reading for the nine policies for second reading and the two administrative.
Have a motion by Ms. Johnson for the nine policies presented and two administrative rules. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second by Ms. Howell. Any need for discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, no. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. The next one is the model policy around Gavin's Law. There's two policies associated with that and I ask for your approval for first reading.
Have before you two policies for Gavin's Law. Do I have a motion for administration or as recommended by administration? Who did accept policy GB, GBEBE and JICFB as per recommendation of staff? I have a motion by Mr. Rebels for acceptance of GBEBE and JICFB as recommended by administration. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Johnson. Any need for discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hagner. Now I'll turn it over to Office Superintendent, Ms. Kella Cox.
Thank you, Chairman Childers, board members. I have two items for you tonight. Both are information items. The first item is a reminder that at the regular meeting in December, you will be electing your officers for the next, for the next year and that we did do an adjustment to that policy in August of this year. When those positions are elected at the December meeting, the chair does not take over until the next subsequent meeting. So that is an information item for you, which is a reminder. None of them.
Yes, ma'am.
And the next item that I have for you are a listing of the upcoming dates that are pertinent to your calendars. You can see we have the Thanksgiving holidays coming up next week. We have the work session on the twenty-eighth of November. Hickory Grove Parade is on December the second. December one through three is the legislative advocacy in Charleston. Then the York Parade on December the eighth, and then we're back around for the December board meeting. Please note under there that school specific dates are included in your weekly Friday file. There are just so many of those dates, particularly with the holidays coming up, that we are posting them in your Friday file as opposed to the board agenda. And that's all I have for you to say.
Thank you, Ms. Cox. Is there any need for executive session tonight?
Unless anyone has questions about night evaluation, remember we'll be doing that at the work session.
An evaluation due dates for the twenty-fourth. So unless somebody has a, anything up in their executive session or Ms. Cox for evaluation. Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Motion to adjourn by Ms. Howell, second by Ms. Johnson. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, no. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks for our call in.